I'll go ahead and call the meeting in order and start with Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, good morning. Next is the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Next is approval of the amendments.
Make the motion to approve the amendments of our last meeting.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve claims for payment.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have ineligible homestead and military credits to be disallowed for 2014 and 15.
I make a motion on homestead credits to be allowed and disallowed for 2015 and 2016 as printed on the paper.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Also have homestead military credits to be allowed and disallowed payable 2016, 2017.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And next is a disabled veteran's homestead tax credit to be disallowed for 2014.
I'll make a motion on disabled veterans' homestead tax credits to be disallowed 2014.
I will second that.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion?
Does she want to comment on this one at all? I see it was missed the September 1st deadline, so that's the reason it's being disallowed.
I'm not in charge of the credits.
Okay.
The assessment office is where they...
Okay. I don't know if you were... Hope this be er on that or not, so that's fine. That's the reason for that one. Just missed the deadline.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next on is discussion action regarding lease and postage machine. This is coming from the auditor.
The tinny bowls sales rep came to visit, let us know that our machine is outdated to what they service and produce parts for anymore, and that it will become increasingly difficult to maintain. Thought that replacing it with like-size equipment would save us money, which it did to the tune of like forty to fifty dollars. However, we talked about our needs, and this machine upstairs is more than what we need. So we actually went with a little bit smaller machine that will still do the same amount of output for our needs, but we don't provide something that we don't use. This... Apparently, this machine is like for tens of thousands of pieces of mail, and we don't do that every day. So we downsized just a little bit, and we'll be saving on our lease payments a hundred dollars a month from what we pay now. So I brought that to you. If you have questions, I can try and answer them, but all I know is... Is what I just said.
Thank you.
Yep.
James, you got any other comments?
Nope.
Will it have those same features?
Yeah, it will still allow us to track the account spending for different reasons, like we do now. Apparently, the one that we have now allows up to some ungodly number, like hundreds of accounts, and we really only use ten. And we're paying for that feature. And then it also, the end that expands out as we run big, huge bulks of mail through it, that's no longer going to be there. It's going to be where it feeds out and goes down into a bin that we then take the mail. And they said that the expanding machine that we have is for when you're running tens of thousands of pieces of mail through it all at once. And we have a handful of times during the year that we would run something that large. You know, usually it's much smaller pieces of mail, you know, a couple hundred here and there. So anyway, that's going to reduce the cost. We don't have to buy a new table, because the table that the current machine sits on is actually undersized for the machine that it sits on. So by going back down to a smaller table, we don't have to buy a new table and the cabinet that holds all the things. And he also said that this one is upgraded to not use analog anymore for our fax line to do any of our downloads of the increases in postage. It will do it all... It will be connected to the network at all times, and will automatically do those sorts of things for us, so that we don't have to stop our mail production, pull out the big thing, go run it over to the copy machine, plug it into the fax machine, that type of thing. It'll automatically do that for us. And he also assured me, but I had my doubts, that they would be able to run your license plates through it as well.
Okay, that's where I was going.
And not have to hand calculate them. He told me that, said the current machine should do that too. I said it does not. He said that he's pretty certain, a hundred percent, that it will do that for you. And he said that that's a feature that is on it. And because Iowa doesn't have raised plates, that you don't have a problem sending them through.
Right. We do now, so I was hoping that it was going to stay that way.
And I complained about the tape, the way it feeds. He said that the design is a smaller spool now, so that there is not as much crinkling of the tape that we have issues with. So... So that's it.
Sounds like it's all positive.
Yeah.
Make a motion that we approve the lease on this postage machine that we have before us.
I'll second.
It's been moved to second. Any other discussion?
Sounds like we're downsizing and upgrading and spending less.
I think Michelle might have been concerned that she has to go back to licking the stamps.
That'd be my fate.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Next on the agenda is a group vision care renewal agreement. We have that with Avis right now. I know we've been approached by another company last year, but I really haven't heard anything positive or negative with the company that we have.
I don't use the plan, but I haven't heard employees come up to me pro or con against the plan. So I just don't get any feedback on this plan too much. I don't know if Jessica does. You get everything at the office. Yeah, Daryl's looking at what plan.
I used it in the past, and I didn't have any issues with it. You just have to find a provider that is an Avis's provider. And I found it to be beneficial, but when you opened up to having the HMO plan for healthcare coverage, that includes one visit a year for eye care. And that was the whole reason that I had the plan, plus trying to get classes. But I don't find that I need them anymore, so I don't have it. I just went back to the regular standard. But as far as complaints, I don't think that I've heard complaints since the day I started in that office.
Do you have?
I have it. Yep. I've used it for the last ten years, so...
I used it last week, and it worked fine.
It is a plan that the employees have to actually purchase, a monthly purchase plan. So you can elect either purchase it or not purchase it, so...
I'll make a motion to accept the group vision care plan renewal agreement.
Second.
It's been moved to second to approve the group vision care plan renewal. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next is the 2015 Wage Works Flex Plan Renewal Document. And this is just our annual renewal?
Yeah. I don't know if any other changes on it, so... Do you?
Make a motion that we approve the Flex Plan Renewal Document that we have before us today.
I'll second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, we have is an appointment to the Green Belt Home Care Board, and I've had two applications, both very qualified, and I'm open for that.
I'll make a motion to appoint Diana Rule to Green Belt Home Care Board. She has a nursing background. She's retired and has no conflicts on attending meetings. She understands that the position is to serve on two boards, Green Belt Home Care and Liaison to the Board of Health. She has stated that the success of Green Belt Home Care is in her primary focus.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any discussion? Have we got the resignation from...
Yes, Mike White's received it on email, and it should be in the mail. She sent it in the mail yesterday, and we have a preliminary on record.
Can we point without the resignation?
This is filling, by your term?
It's filling a person that is resigning because she is not going to be available.
Whose term is she?
Sharon Trynall. Which we will miss. By the way, Sharon recommends Diana highly, and I highly respect Sharon's point of view. We will miss her.
I guess my only concern was, can we appoint somebody without the resignation first? I just thought of that one when we were doing this.
We have a resignation on record, and she's sending another resignation. It's already sent with an updated date, but we have one on file already on my desk.
Oh, we haven't officially... This one hasn't officially accepted it.
Yeah, we haven't accepted it yet.
We can appoint in lieu of... As we get her resignation.
Or should we just table this?
We have to run it through the Board of Health, which meets... We're trying to meet this week. And it's got to be approved by the Board of Health. They meet...
We're at a first and a second, so we're in discussion. So I think what you need to do is you need to amend the motion and get some type of wording that states something of... I can't word it right now exactly, but that...
Upon the resignation.
Us receiving resignation.
So I'll make an appointment of Diana Rule upon the resignation of Sharon Trynall.
Second.
It's been moved to the amendment. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
How about the other one?
That's on the amendment, right?
That was on the amendment.
Now on the original motion. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next on the agenda is Gordon Colterman at Mervier Camp regarding a culvert under the highway and a water issue with water issues in Buckeye. And we have a map here for it, if you guys want to point out what your issues are.
Is there anywhere to put that up?
Can you hold it?
Is it big enough for you, Merv?
Well, nothing looks familiar. Never been this high before. Really did. The culvert in question is right here, underneath the road, at the car control. What has happened, guys? And I'll cover a lot of bases for the rebuttals that I may get here. Some things have changed in the last five years. Previous to that, you might have a flood on this side of town once every fifteen or twenty years. That I can live with. This is my bin site here. I put up another bin here now. What happens when we have the problem of water backing up is that it floods my bin site here. It floods these residences here, floods everything pretty much back this way, okay? You're asking, well, why is it happening? It happened last year. We didn't have any torrential downpours, but we did have a very wet June. The dynamics have changed insofar as everything out this direction here for probably a hundred, hundred and twenty acres maybe on the Farmer Kenny farm has been pattern tiled, which he has every right to do, but the main comes right down through here.
Yeah.
Okay? And out this way. So once you fill this main... Okay, now I have to stand corrected, because I thought it went right through here and through the railroad. We've got to have a tile, I would think, coming through here somewhere that connects to this. This main goes right underneath that quonset, so... Okay, this is news to me. I never realized. And is this map for sure, the map of the main?
Well, Megan made that. That's the drainage map, so she put that layer on there.
No, that's wonderful. So, I mean, I'm not going to claim the...
We have found with our mains on our maps, they can be a little off. They usually wouldn't be that far off, but they... You know, it might not go underneath this building, but it would be close.
It doesn't matter. What has happened is when you tile that many acres into this, it fills this main up and the rest of the town, which would normally drain into this main, whichever direction. And I'm sorry that I was mistaken. I thought it went out here and went into that main there, into that lateral. But when this is full, it doesn't allow the water from at least this half then to get away. And so it's created more water here. Now, what exactly is the problem is that this is a dam, and this driveway here is a dam. And how do I know that? Because my bins are flooded, and I went out with a city council member, Don Barr, and we looked. And when we're standing in this driveway, back here away from the water where it's rolling over the road, it's a foot to eighteen inches lower on this side of that driveway than it is this side. It's rolling up over and then dropping down. Therefore, it's not rocket science. That's a dam. We have another dam here on the road, which is the main problem, and there was about a two- to three-foot drop here. So in other words, we've got water pooling up here, backing up and flooding this whole half of the town or so because of two dams here. Now, I'm not saying it would correct the problem completely. I'm not... Sorry about that. Started heaven's moods. Anyway, when you see two- to three-foot drop here in the water, because it's pooling up here and can't get away, it tells me that we need either a higher culvert or another culvert, bigger culvert here. So that's the main thing.
There's a... The outlet going in this tile right over here, and there's like a two-hundred and forty acres. They pattern tiled that whole thing the last couple of years too, so that's going in there too. There's one tube going over the road, and it goes right to there. And like I say, there is some stuff in the tube. It's got some problems too, you know? But that's where it goes into there, but now this here has been tiled here to be going. That goes over across, and it goes down the street and connects on the other end down there, but...
Water flows this way, right?
Yeah.
This way or this way?
Like I say, it's...
All northerly.
Okay.
There's...
From south.
The tile's got to take a lot of it. There's a certain amount of natural drainage going. The natural drainage goes northeast. There's a certain amount of natural drainage there. But like I say, it connects in there. But the road is, like I say, there's some fill in there and stuff, you know? And it's a... It wasn't like they had four or five inches at one time. I think the biggest rain we had was probably two inches at one time. But the total finally mounted up there and stuff, but...
And then the water stayed for a long time. So my main issue is, I mean, if we've got dams here and the water's naturally trying to flow, I just don't feel that's right and fair, and it's costing me a lot of money and the damage to the bin site, so... And not to mention, I'm speaking for the other residents of the town too that are flooded and saturated up, getting almost up into their first level of their house, even though it's built up a couple of feet. So, you know, you feel like, to give everybody, we've all played in mud puddles or whatever when we were kids and watching the flow of water. I know that if I would have came in here with my backhoe, which I wasn't going to quite do that. If I would have came in here with my backhoe and cut that road out there, it would have dropped that water.
So this is...
If I would have cut through this first, it would have dropped that. And then if I would have cut through that driveway, it would have been down to mantrial levels. I'm always going to stand water down here on a decent-sized ring. I just don't want it going up over my foundation and getting into the electrical motors and my corn that's stored there and all that.
This is County Road here that come down and goes to the end of Main Street again. So that is County, and then this Prairie Avenue along the west side of town is the one that goes to... Well, it's called Prairie Avenue Town, but it's the road that... That's County also going on that pass to town that side there, so...
So another issue, I don't know if it's pertinent, it is to why we're getting so much water. This field, I don't know if things have changed when they put up the county shed here. I don't know if there's any old ways to look back and see.
That's chemical shit.
But, yeah, not the county shed, but the chemical shed, I would say. The owner here, who hasn't lived here forever, thought that there used to be water flow going this way. I don't believe that, because that seems like it goes uphill from the alley here. But anyway, right here, this particular spot here is just gushing water out of the intake and everything, and that helps to flood everything this way too, so... I mean, it's... Things have changed, two out of the last five years. Otherwise, I wouldn't be here. You know, if this was a once-in-a-decade occurrence, I'd just say, well, Buckeye's wet. Well, Buckeye is wet, but there's no reason why we should have a dam created to knock us up.
There's an outlet here, and this has all been fixed the last couple of years. They fixed that, made sure. Yeah, all this long here drains right down into that, and it would, like I say, there... This is... There ought to be something to go over to that from here possibly too. That's where a lot of the water comes from, right there.
Right.
Because this has been draining good.
But this is uphill from this alley up here, so I don't really think we could do anything here. I mean, it's just an issue of this and this have created the dam that holds this water back. Like, I don't know if there's anything that could be done, so...
I brought to you guys yesterday, kind of short notice, and I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at it and see anything or have any comments or...
No comments for... I don't know. How long ago did that driveway get put in that you're saying is creating the dam?
The one for the gas pump?
Yeah.
That's been there for some time.
Yeah, ten.
FS owns that right now.
Ten years, probably. They may have raised it in the last seven since FS hauled it.
And this... This problem has just been coming the last couple of years. I mean, it's always flooded, but it's flooded worse now.
Oh, yeah, much worse now. And like I say, it makes sense that when you don't have part of it draining into the main, because the main's already full because of the pattern tiling, it makes sense that the problem's exacerbated by that, so...
So I'm wondering, is that a drainage district problem where their tile needs to be bigger? You know, that road pipe was built to specs. It handled it for all these years, and now because of new tiling, now that road can't handle it.
Yeah, see, that lateral, like I say, that lateral comes down from here, take care of all that. But this whole area out, if there could be some way to connect on one of the other tiles from this whole area like in here...
Well, no, we've got tile. We've got tile that runs from here this way that comes out here. And so I don't know. It probably hurts on lateral B across the road.
That goes into there, but I didn't know there was one there. This is the only...
Yeah, we've got an intake right here at my bin site, so...
So I don't know where that connects.
And that water's flowing that way. I would guess that comes right from here. You know, you've got corolluses. We're looking at corolluses right here, and that's where they did the...
I didn't know there was one there.
Yeah. Well, that's where that stand pipe is, and that's... Right here is where they did all that work a year or two ago.
Yeah, that was...
So you guys did that.
That took care of that, and that was this area. It was pattern tiled. Here it goes there, and that's been working. There hasn't even been a pond there hardly, you know? Because the whole stretch through there was the one.
When you were into that, did you notice that there was one here? It probably started on this side, didn't it, and then went right down here?
That one hooked directly into the big main, and then headed back east.
This one does, like from here?
Like Corolla's building.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yeah, that goes in the main. That one there, but... Yeah, I don't know what's down here. This is... Yeah, I don't know.
No, we've got intakes on both sides of this intersection, right here on my bin site and everything.
Where it goes to there, I don't know.
But it's bubbling up so high, this road is probably, I don't know, maybe a foot, foot and a half higher than my bin site, than the foundation, if you will. And it was actually building up, going up over the road, but it's two feet lower than the highway.
So it's bubbling out of this?
This is the dam. This is the dam. You got a dam from here to here. And all that needs to be done is a larger tile put in here, and I'd be satisfied. But I know that's all it takes, but gee whiz, it costs the county money. Well, I'm standing here as a taxpayer and citizen saying it's costing me a lot of private money because of the dam that was created. It may have handled it at the time, and it may not have. I don't know. We didn't have the exact rains we had for 2014 in the previous twenty years, but we had ninety-three that flooded, and we've had 2009, and now that have flooded in the last five. So it seems to be worse because we didn't have the torrential rains last year. Wet, but not torrential rains. So my concerns is how often is it going to flood yet?
What do we have over here? I can't remember what's on.
That's underwater from time to time, too, that it had water. Yeah, that's the elevators anhydrous plant. I didn't know where this... This is the only tile that I really knew about. I really wasn't aware of where that was at. I knew there was an outlet over there.
In other words, the water's trying to flow this way. Once again, I'm sorry to be so repetitive. The water's trying to flow this way, and it can't. This is lower in here. There's no reason why I should be subjected to a dam up here. The water's trying to get this way, and the road is there, and the culvert's not big enough. Why in the world... Maybe what I should do is, in my property, just build a ten-foot berm around. No, no, don't nod at me. That's not what I want to do.
These are suggestions something you don't want to do.
Merv, I have a question. You said you had a surface intake there on that tile. Is that what you were talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
And then that, when you get a lot of rain, it's actually coming out of that tile, bubbling up?
Um, I can't say that.
It does. It was coming out. It was bubbling out of one up here. I know there's a tile that goes across the road. Well, I don't know where else it comes from. I know there was a tile that was bubbling out there, but that there comes... That comes from there, but I...
Because if it is bubbling out, then I mean, you are right.
It was. It was right up here.
The system is... I mean, Daryl is right, because we have that in our fields. Now that pattern tiled is taken, we're pressuring this main so much, and you're an easy out right now, and so it's using you as a...
Because we've had our tiled here.
You have more pressure.
Let's just say from this side of town, this half, if you will, or forty percent, what normally would have been draining down now can't drain down because the main's full.
Right.
And so that surface water now is crossing this road and coming down here and dumping on.
The upper always drains out first and so...
So to me, it sounds like that's a drainage district problem, because they're causing that problem. If that tile isn't there, and the other tiles aren't there, you're not getting flooded, because that main's not handling the water, is what I'm gathering. If you take those tiles out, you're not going to get flooded.
Aye.
Or put a restrictor into the tiles, so it only allows so much water to come through.
On the way, that's true. Probably Daryl's, if this intake is actually bubbling up.
Okay.
And that would actually be dumping water in their property. And the second way it could be true, it may not be bubbling up, but it can't get away either.
I've never seen this bubbling up.
Okay.
I can't say that I've ever seen that.
But it can't get away, and normally it may...
But it can't get away, and we're... I don't... I don't... I see something a lot more simpler than that. I see a drainage problem because of a dam. Plain and simple. We're dammed up here. Let's cut through there and let the water go naturally where it wants to go. And if we still stand some water in there, fine.
And what I see is everybody paying for a water problem caused by a few. So I need to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and we're justifying it. I mean, if we're causing the problem, we will fix it. But what sense does it make for us to go and put a new box culvert in because the problem's upstreamed by somebody else that caused it? Now, everybody's paying, and those that are responsible are getting away with it. That's all I'm looking at. I'm not saying we won't do this. We very well met. But everybody pays for that road. So we want to make sure that the money's being spent correctly. Is it a drainage district problem, or is it the road problem? You know? That's, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying we're not going to do anything.
And I'm not smart enough to know if what I suggested the differences were, were actually the differences, so.
I mean, because we have another lateral there, is there something where we need more tile, the drainage district needs to hook up to the other main? You know what I mean?
I do.
You know?
Is that culvert clean? I mean, did it have, were you-
It was probably about four inches in the bottom.
Didn't, didn't you say there was another intake that's covered up over there now?
Yes.
But that's on the other side of the road, so that doesn't-
That's on the north side.
No, 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 no!
If the other, the other intake, you mean, intake or culvert?
Culvert, then intake.
There's an intake-
The intake on the north side.
On the north side.
The intake, right, there's an intake right over there.
There's only this much showing of the standpipe.
This here's all been pattern tiled in the last couple of years too, and I don't-
Only that much showing of the standpipe.
Big share of that goes some other direction, but the intake is, the tile, and then the intake's right on the other side of the tile.
That definitely contributes to the problem.
Yeah.
Because if that's not taking the water there, that's crossing, because you've got another culvert that crosses here, so I'm getting everything from the railroad tracks down here, and they're pumping out of those elevator pits constantly. If that, I didn't realize it was an intake.
No, it's more by your pinky.
Well, you're talking right here.
No, no.
Right there.
Oh, oh, oh!
This here's got tiled.
Well, but, I mean, it may help take the water faster, but that doesn't change the fact that your water's higher on one side than it is on this side, you know?
Right. Unless, unless, because this intake's not taking it, it fills up and creates just a little bit more pressure on that culvert underneath, because it's higher than the culvert. You know what I'm saying? So if this was taking it, and this has all been pattern tiled here too, in the last few years.
Part of it, part of that tunnel they stretched out.
So you never know, mistakes can be made, maybe that was restricted a little bit, right there, when they hooked it up.
I'm sure some of that went into that tile there, part of it drains the other way, but part of it does drain.
Isn't, isn't there other tile in there too, Mike? I mean, by that chemical, wasn't there a tile by that field, or an intake?
I'm not familiar with any other tile over there, we've, we've replaced that intake, and-
A few times.
I'm not sure what's the problem is, I'm not, I think it may be the chemicals creating a dead zone, so lots of the road-
District number.
The culvert underneath the road is, is open, so there's no restriction-
There's only about three or four inches.
One thing-
But that intake is definitely buried again, but we keep cleaning around them, and then it just keeps eroding back in and filling in, and it's just repetitive.
Buckeye part of the drainage district.
Okay.
Buckeye part of the drainage district.
We can't keep up with that.
Yeah, there's certain, not so dirty in there, and the weeds and stuff, I'd bring it up.
I'm not sure if it's like the chemicals that's creating a dead zone, so it's just constantly dirt, and-
I wonder if we, what we ought to do, it's just an idea, but if we, if we shouldn't run this through drainage, because that's the only way to really get a drainage engineer on it. Buckeye is in, I'm not sure what drainage district this is, but then, that drainage district is going to pay for someone to come out and look at the situation, and then they would come back to our drainage meeting and give us suggestions of how to fix it, and that would be from a drainage engineer, which all the people in that drainage district would be assessed that cost, which wouldn't be, I don't know how big the acres are there.
No problem, we would assess-
There's another farmer out here, right here, that's also done some pattern tiling too.
Careful over there, you lose that left hand.
I'm sorry. But, yeah, I've done some tiling out here too that goes in lateral B, so.
Well, why don't we back this up? We've, we've taken the inputs, we've had the engineer out there, looked at it, see what we can do.
Well, I think we should meet out there too, you know, and with the drainage engineer.
Yeah, that's what they need to do, right? Just get everybody right there together, and then you can get some-
Maybe with Lee, or is that who you-
That's what I was thinking, yeah.
Yes, get the drainage engineer and see, see what all the-
Is Lee coming today? Or?
I don't know, I don't remember.
I'll be available, just give me a call.
If you got time to hang out a little after this meeting, we got a drainage meeting, and then maybe we can catch Lee right there.
Okay.
I can't remember if he's coming today or not. If all is spelled, we can get him on phone.
Pretty important, just so everybody understands why, this isn't just a little water covering up my driveways, this is water that, two out of the last five years, has actually come up, not only above my foundation on my bins, and then another eight to ten inches up past the irrigation floor, but actually has gotten into my stored corn, and so.
There was water, there was water going, say, there's, there's water going across the road there, it wasn't going across the big highway, was it? But you had water going across this street here.
Yeah.
And when it gets up that high, then, and there's a, there's a tile under, or tube under there, and there's a tube under all that that's, that's open, but-
No, there's not a tube under here, Dean, that's, that's just intake, intake.
That's the intake there, okay, I, I know there's-
And I don't want a tube now, because I'm afraid all this water coming here now will back up into, and make it even deeper.
So do, do your intakes, do they tie into one or the other of the mains?
Once, once again, I would guess everything.
Okay.
Buckeye would guess this is flowing from the, from the south to the north. Right here is a tile, we know there's a tile underneath here, because there's two intakes. Now, is there a possibility that it goes over to the east side of the road? Sure.
I think it probably does.
Okay, goes over to the east side.
I think it does.
And then, you would almost guarantee that it goes this direction to hook onto the lateral.
I would imagine it hooks onto that main, and then just-
You think it comes back?
And then just keeps going northeast.
It's flat enough, it could.
Yeah. That'd be my guess.
I've never, I've never seen it dug, I grew up right here, and I've never seen that dug down there, so, maybe it does go back to the main.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah, thirty-six, so, nineteen thirty-six.
If we get that locator, we're probably going to see where all this stuff goes.
It's not thirty-six.
I'll make a motion to, that we send this, so we get it on our records for our meeting, that we send this to our drainage meeting, and contact our drainage engineer to have him look this over, to get a opinion from him on a direction of it.
Second. It's been moved to secondary, any discussion? I think it's definitely an important factor, especially when you're burying a lot of corn in water, so, let's try to move on this as fast as we can.
And like, is that Merv, if he's coming for this meeting, we could talk about it here in about ten minutes again.
Any other discussion? Harry, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Utility permit, secondary road.
We have one utility permit.
I have one permit, ten dash fourteen dash fourteen, Midland Power Cooperative, I make a motion to approve that.
Second. It's been moved to secondary, any discussion? Harry, none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, secondary roads.
New tandem arrived, Brad Rogers, and I'm going to put out for bid for a new pickup for Greg, he's the assistant maintenance superintendent, and his pickup, getting up there in miles, and we're having some problems with it, so he's out early in the mornings